Yeah, I can see.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, my e- oh, okay.
You'll have to tell me the rest of that story later.
Okay. Okay, are we ready?
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, and we will begin with board of points.
Good morning, everyone. I hope you all have had a wonderful week so far. I hope you continue to have a wonderful week. So recently, I attended the GIS twenty eighteen, or twenty seventeen, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Symposium Night. So for all of you who don't know, Global International Studies is a program native to Lenartown High School. Basically, it's, as it sounds, you study for, like AP foreign policy and the government at a faster, rigorous pace. And every year, what makes GIS GIS is that it has a capstone project, or a capstone research project. So it's juniors and seniors required to write a paper, present a product, and do it, whether they're doing an exhibit, a website, or a documentary, and then they have a presentation in front of a scholarly panel. So this part of the GIS capstone process, I went to the Symposium Night, which is where they get to present their products, which is the website or documentary. And it was really nice. You got to, well, I was actually participating in it because I am in the GIS program. So I did an exhibit, and my project was about student loan debt. But you, you got to see every, everybody else's project, and it was, they're very elaborate. They're larger than life. We had some people doing capital punishment, which is really cool, because they actually created a jail cell that you could walk into and see the different methods for capital punishment. And it was, it was really nice. It was very thoughtful, and you could tell that they put a lot of time and effort into it. That's all.
So I attended the Great Mills Junior ROTC. It was the first battalion quarters, and this is where they went over awards for academics, the orienteering, drill team. So it, it was, it was really nice. They had their whole battalion there, so they did their formation. The drill team placed third in the state this year, which was really, that was fantastic. They have two new instructors there that have some new and great ideas, and they're really pushing the students to improve themselves and to do better. So it was really nice to see that. A lot of parents came out to see their sons and daughters participating, and look forward to seeing what the rest of the year brings with them.
I also attended the NROTC Awards at Great Mills with most of the members here. And also, I attended the Chesapeake Public Charter Schools with Mrs. Bailey last week, and Mrs. Angela Funia, might I pronounce it? She was the educational director, was very, very helpful, and gave us a guided tour of the facility. I believe the facility at one time was a racket club, and the school purchased the facility, did a great build-out. And I was asked some questions, because quite honestly, I don't know too much about charter schools. Of course, it's a public charter school, so the FTEs are employees. I kind of knew that, but I asked the question anyways. And so the administrative function is really similar to the rest of the schools. I says, "Well, what's so unique about the charter schools?" And one thing was the class sizes are a lot smaller. And of course, the selection criteria is strictly by lottery, so there's no discrimination at all. What I noticed is a lot of the parents were there at the school, and I asked that question, and she says, "The parents appear to be very highly engaged in the program." Lastly, I attended the Veterans Parade. It's kind of a highlight for me. I'm an Army veteran, and I just was moved by the great acceptance that the public offered to the, to the veterans in this county. When I was in, at Fort Bragg during early parts of Vietnam, we never wore a uniform all days, and for reasons I think you probably all know. So fast forward, you know, almost sixty years later, veterans are very much appreciated. The only thing that I missed was the horses. I didn't think there was any, I didn't see any Clydesdales. Supposedly, they didn't come out because it was so cold. But it was a very, very nice venue, and it was enjoyed by all.
Let's see, last week was School Safety Week for me. We had a meeting of the sub-cabinet on Monday, where primarily, we broke into groups from across the state and all of the, all of the members, and talked about different safety concerns that we had within the schools. And what I think all of the five groups came up with is that there is a, there is a somewhat large concern among everyone about the safety of the schools after the school day ends. So that recommendation will go up to the sub-cabinet, so they can evaluate it and possibly put it on their evaluation checklist that will be coming down to the schools when they have to certify what their school safety gaps are, I guess, in the upcoming months. And then secondly, there was another additional meeting with SROs and regarding SROs and adequate law enforcement coverage across the schools. And it was represented from pretty much every county. Unfortunately, there were a lot of more police there than there were system employees. So those of us that were there from a system did provide a lot of input from our standpoint, rather than just strictly looking at it from a law enforcement plan and responsibility. So both of those were, were, I think, very valuable. And once again, all of that will be taken back to the Center for School Safety, because they moderated the meeting, and then also going up to the sub-cabinet as they make recommendations for what adequate law enforcement coverage should be, because if we all remember, in the bill that was passed, it just states adequate. It doesn't delineate what it is. We did talk a lot about staying away from a number, like one SRO in each high school or anything like that, because then that kind of pigeonholes a school system. And we still want to make sure that the local, the locals have somewhat control in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department or Police Department, whatever it may be in each county, to determine themselves, rather than having something dictated down from, from the state or from the, from the sub-cabinet. And surprisingly, I'm going to have to give kudos to St. Mary's County. Apparently, we have more, one of the more complete memorandum, memorandum of understandings between our school system and the, the county law enforcement agency, whichever that may be within the different counties. I know in particular Charles County, I was sitting at the table with Charles County SROs and the individual from the school system that, that runs the, the SRO, like their school safety coordinator, or whatever his, his moniker is. And they had not updated theirs, nor did, that was in process, and they didn't have any, they didn't have a lot of information even about what was in it. So hats off to Dr. Smith, Mike Wyatt, and Sheriff Cameron for making sure that that document's there. And I know they all have regular conversations about, you know, how, you know, it might need to evolve as we go through this process. Lastly, on a little bit of a lighter note, I did attend the Lenartown High School Talent Show last Friday. Very, it was very engaging. There was, I have to give hats off, there was, there was a lot of independence in there. There was one, one student who sat up there, and she just did a complete monologue, which was fabulous. There was another student who wrote and composed and sang his very own original song. So it was, it was very entertaining. So hats off to, to the Enrader Nation. So it was very nicely done. So, and that is all I have.
Thank you. I will highlight one event that I attended. It was the All County Middle School Honors Course and High School Honors Course, which was held last night at Lenartown High School. Mrs. Allen, Superintendent Smith, and I attended. The middle school guest conductor was Catherine Archer, who works at Montgomery County Public Schools. She said, "Music can change people." The performance was uplifting, it was invigorating, it was positive, and it was heartfelt. And one of the songs the students sang was "I'll Make a Difference," words and music by Mogus Hogan. And I'll read you some of the words. It said, "I'm the one who can make the difference. Yes, I will make the difference. Against all odds, I can live to share my love with others. Yes, I will make the difference. I can make it. Take my hand as we make this journey across the land. I had the courage to keep going on. I had the faith when all hope was gone. I had the strength to keep holding on. I can make the difference. Yes, I can. We're the ones who can make the difference. Yes, we will make the difference. Against all odds, we can live to share our love with others. Yes, we will make the difference. We can make it. Take my hand as we make this journey across the land." That was just one of the beautiful pieces that the students sang. And the high school guest conductor was Nathan, Nathan Carnes from Cecil County Public Schools. And he talked about mental illness. In two thousand and fifteen, suicide took the lives of forty-one thousand, one hundred forty-nine people in the United States. Depression affects about twenty million people in the U.S. and about three hundred fifty worldwide. Mental health disorders are serious issues in our culture, and it is important that we have open conversation about their existence and that we should show support to those who are battling it. "Please Stay," the song that they sang, is an anthem for hope, an attempt to de-stigmatize mental illness and challenge all of us to support those who are battling depression and thoughts of suicide. You are not alone. We can make a difference. We can be the support system that saves a life. And Dr. Smith was so touched by the performance that he was, he was tearing up. But it was easy to make you tear up with that song. And he said, "It is not always about the grades. Kids need to know that they are loved. Asking someone not to go is a final, in a final way. It is okay making, it is okay not to make the varsity team." And some of the words from that are, "No, don't go. Don't let your worst day be your last. The storm is strong, but it will pass. You think you can't go on another day, but please stay, just stay. Hope is real. Help is real. You are breath. You are life. Your story is not over. You are not a burden to anyone. Please stay, just stay." I want to thank Dr. Burrows, the Supervisor of Instruction for Fine Arts, our music educators, guest conductors, the Director of Middle and High School Corps, parents and students for a heartfelt performance. Thank you very much.
The, Mr. Carnes' father shared with me that that song was brought to his son by one of his students who had struggled and wanted to bring attention to that. I also attended the Veterans Day Parade. My, my tradition is that rather than walk with all the elected officials, I've been riding on the Lenartown Elementary School float since my children were at Lenartown Elementary, and so was given the opportunity yet again to ride on that float and had an absolutely wonderful time. The horses were there, Mr. Davis. They were, they were a ways ahead of us, but I saw Wayne Mast had posted pictures from, from up on the wagon, looking down over the horses, so they were there. And also really enjoyed the presentations. This year, two students from Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School spoke about what Veterans Day means to them, and their principal Beth Ramsey here today with us was, was there that day as well, and supporting her students. And then three students from Lenartown Elementary were also part of sharing their, their thoughts about what Veterans Day means to them, and their principal, Dr. Cantina Quick-McQueen, was there supporting them as well, so, as well as a couple of their teachers. So it really was a great day. And Mrs. Washington and I, just quickly, we also last night attended the CSM, College of Southern Maryland Adult Education Graduation Ceremony. There were, I believe, twenty-six students who had completed their GED and were going on. And the Foundation of CSM has yet again provided a five hundred dollar scholarship for each one of those graduates to take courses at CSM. So kudos to the Foundation and to CSM for supporting those, those wonderful students.
That's great. Thank you. Yeah, so as you've all remarked, I've had the pleasure of attending multiple events with you over the last two weeks, and they are, they're, they're incredible. From seeing the, the students at Great Mills High School with Captain Randall and the new, the Chief Mack and Lieutenant Scott, I mean, they really, that's quite, that's quite, that's quite a program. I did go to see Peter and the Star Catcher at Chopticon High School, or, sorry, yes, the Chopticon High School. Got to get it right.
Brave House Productions.
Yeah, Brave House Productions. Christie Blewett is the theater arts teacher. What a, what a wonderful production. What a, what a lot of fun. I'm going to only kind of focus on one thing. I also met with all the, the superintendent's advisory group of employees called Sage. We got together, we talked about the survey, we talked about the whole child, we talked about the way that we're communicating with one another. I do want to focus, that yesterday, I went up to Annapolis for what's called Legislative Day, where all the superintendents and from larger systems where they actually have a legislative liaison, somebody who just specifically works within the system on concerns like that, they were also in attendance. And we got to hear from our elected officials what they think, what some of their focus is going to be as the upcoming two thousand and nineteen legislative session gets underway. A lot of focus was on the Kerwin Commission. As it comes forward, they're finally costing out the commission, ringing in at a price tag of about four billion dollars. Nobody spoke about raising taxes or changing structure or anything like that, so we'll have to just see how that will. I know that a lot of really good people from the school systems have been paying close attention and trying to contribute and participate. We'll just have to, we'll have to see. Either way, I think there's going to be a lot of conversation about education, a lot of conversation about educational funding. And what really needs to be focused on is how we make sure that we recognize those people engaged in, I believe, our nation's most important work, our young people, and how we treat them with respect, and how we compensate them with respect. So I will tell you that all the, all the superintendents, we did get together, and we were talking about all of you, because we just went through elections, so we were talking about our, our Boards of Education and, and whether they had new membership and coming on. And I did get to brag about the fact that I, our Board remains completely intact and obviously has the vote of confidence of the greater public, because you were unopposed. I also got to brag about the fact that I do get to, I get to spend time with all of you out in the schools, seeing our kids. And in some systems, that's not, that's not something that, that happens regularly. And that really is kind of a foundational element of the school system. You are very much seen in our buildings with our kids and in our larger community, and that makes St. Mary's County so very special. So I'm blessed to be here with all of you and to continue with all of you, and I look forward to tomorrow. Little plug, we have the State of the Schools, hosted by the Chamber of Commerce at our own James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center. And we're really focusing this, this, this event is really focusing on how well our kids are prepared for college and careers and the next challenges in their lives as they graduate at over a ninety-four percent on-time four-year graduation rate in St. Mary's County, how they, how they are ready for the very next step. So I think that, I think all those in, in attendance are really going to be impressed with the conversations about our kids and with our kids tomorrow. So with that, thank you very much.
And I think we have Jake Gemmell here, who is here to, working on his Eagle Scout badge.
Oh, fantastic. Wonderful, wonderful.
Did you see a, a different face in the audience that is not typically here?
Well, in our day meetings, we generally know all of our, all of our attending folks, so thank you very much.
That is correct. So welcome. All right, let's see, first up is Dr. Marr with American Education Week.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It is my honor and privilege to be here this morning to share our collective appreciation for those who work with our students every day. November twelfth through sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, has been designated as American Education Week. Today, we also celebrate Educational Support Professionals Day. During this week, we take the time to recognize the important work of our educators and education support personnel alike, each who make our students feel connected to their dreams. Magic Johnson once said, "All kids need is a little help, a little hope, and somebody who believes in them." This week, we celebrate the system of these great believers, those who foster hope and a sense of belonging to help each of our students. Across the system, amazing professionals work tirelessly for our students as they strive to reach their own goals and aspirations. I'd like to invite representatives of our staff to join me here at the podium for this recognition. Let's see, Ms. Jill Morris, the President of the Education Association of St. Mary's County, or ESMIC, Dr. Alex Jaffers, President of the St. Mary's Association of Supervisors and Administrators, SMASA, and Ms. Beth Ramsey, Principal of Captain Walter Francis Duke, and our two thousand and eighteen Principal of the Year. Dr. Smith, will you also join us in this recognition and present the proclamation celebrating American Education Week and Education Support Professionals Day?
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
Whereas, the week of November twelfth through sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, has been designated as American Education Week by the National Education Association in an effort to celebrate public education and honor the individuals who make a difference and ensure that every child receives a quality education. And whereas, education is a pillar of democracy and a cornerstone of American opportunity that gives our children the foundation they need to understand and appreciate the nation's values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas, public schools bring together adults and children, teachers and volunteers, businesses, civic leaders, and elected officials who have a stake in public education and play an important role in inspiring children to learn inside and outside the classroom. And whereas, public schools provide our children with outstanding opportunities in academics, athletics, fine arts, vocational training, and extracurricular activities to equip them with the skills and knowledge they need to grow, thrive, and succeed in our global society. And whereas, all education employees, including teachers, principals, assistant principals, administrators, counselors, par educators, building service workers, cafeteria workers, office personnel, and other support personnel deserve our gratitude, respect, and support for their professionalism and commitment to our students and our schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes November twelfth through sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as American Education Week, and the November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, as Education Support Professionals Day in St. Mary's County Public Schools. We encourage all citizens to join people across the United States in showing support for public education and expressing appreciation to school personnel, and celebrate the education that our children receive every single day from public schools, and assign this fourteenth day of September, two thousand and eighteen. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I get to give one for the best?
Thank you.
Very nice. Would I, would I like to say a word or two?
I would. Would you, Dr. Jackson?
No, I defer to you.
You're going to defer to me?
That's right, there's one.
Okay.
So, good morning.
Good morning.
I know this is something we celebrate every year, but today, that it coincided with ESP recognition days is especially meaningful, as I, by my members, was elected the first ESP president of the Education Association. Most of you know now I'm in my second year. The honeymoon is over. I briefly want to say that I am still humbled and proud to be a part of this great association and St. Mary's County Public Schools. What I truly believe is that educators are still changing the world, and that's why I'm in, because educators changed my world and opened every door for me, and it helped me become the person I am today. And so that we take time to celebrate it and lift up the people who are in the trenches every day, doing it, getting it done, I just want to say I'm grateful and I'm inspired. And the words spoken this morning by our superintendent and Dr. Marr are very meaningful, because it's, it's very important to feel appreciated. And sometimes, as educators, I know Dr. Montgomery's here too. We've already, we've also talked about, sometimes we just need to be appreciated. Sometimes, an ounce of appreciation, people just, it turns everything around. So I know a lot of you do appreciate our educators, but if you would express that to them in every way and any opportunity you have, it really does mean a lot. So I just want to say thank you, and happy American Education Week. Did you want to add anything, Dr. Jappers?
Will you talk for us? All right.
Now, that's a good decision.
Thank you. Happy American Education Week. I was doing a little bit of research on American Education Week, which is sponsored by the NEA, and the NEA's mission and purpose is to provide outstanding public school education to every student, which is what we do. I am so proud to be here at St. Mary's County, and the support and appreciation we get from the Board of Education, from Dr. Smith, Dr. Montgomery, and Dr. Marr, who are always in buildings. And another thing that sets us apart is our supervisors. Our supervisors take feedback from teachers and work so hard to give teachers all these resources so our teachers can give their best to the students. That's what sets us apart. So it is an honor and a privilege to work for St. Mary's County Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick, 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 room. There we go. Good? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great for you guys. Scott, before you guys leave, can you move that podium so Lake and Rita can see?
Oh, that's right. That's right. No.
Thank you.
We don't, we don't want them to miss the, the presentation.
Other duties is assigned.
That's right.
There we go.
Thank you.
We don't, we don't want them to miss the, the presentation.
Other duties is assigned.
That's right.
There we go, that's good, that's good.
Perfect. Okay, um, no public, public comment? None. Okay, so consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor? I opposed, motion is carried. And first up is Mr. Hartwick with Playground Equipment for Greenview Knowles. Are you ready?
Good morning, board members and Dr. Smith. Today, we have an action item related to the playground equipment replacement at Greenview Elementary School. And this has been part of a long process of improving, standardizing, and creating equity for the playyards in all of our elementary schools. So, we've been working at this for about a decade. In terms of this particular action item, we are proposing to utilize the Houston-Galveston Area Council contract for playground improvements at Greenview Knowles. And we're also going to add that this contract be utilized for future maintenance and capital projects as funding permits in order to be efficient. We have used this contract before. Board approved it a number of years ago. The current iteration is good through the year of November of two hundred and nineteen, two thousand nineteen. So, again, to backtrack a little bit about the, the background, in two thousand eight, we created standards for all the elementary schools. Then, we went through and surveyed all the elementary schools, and then we ranked the elementary schools in terms of the greatest needs. Those schools that had the greatest deficiencies. So, we've been working through that list in two thousand eight. Greenview Knowles Elementary School, uh, we've moved that up a little bit because the fall surface is deteriorating. It's one of the older bonded rubber surfaces. The top surface has been worn off, and so, the UV is really breaking down the, the, the lower layer. So, we want to get this one correct. Most of the equipment at Greenview Knowles is still good. There is some replacement, uh, I'll cover that in a second. I just wanted to throw this slide up because it shows our progress in this whole process. We've done twelve schools to date. Greenview Knowles will be the thirteenth. That leaves only three schools left, Green Holly, uh, Leonard Town Elementary School, and, um, George Washington Carver Elementary School. Both LES and Carver were done in two thousand six and two thousand seven, so they're in fairly good shape. So, as we kind of work through this list, our expectation is the amount of work that's needed to get that parity and equity is, you know, require less expenditures. So, uh, and then we're fortunate enough that was Evergreen Elementary School and Captain Walter Francis Duke. We had the standards in our mind and we're able to design those schools to those, to those standards. So, we don't expect that we'll have to do any significant work at, at those schools. For the work that has, has gone on for the last decade, Playground Specialists, uh, has, has performed most, if not all, the playground installations, including the twelve projects that I've talked about. But they, they also were low bidders on a number of our projects, including Carver, Evergreen, and Captain Walter Francis Duke. So, that was a, kind of a test, uh, on their competitiveness. We thought, we've, we've found that it's very advantageous to us to standardize our playground equipment, to ease, uh, the continuing maintenance of that equipment, inspection, um, and, and repairs as necessary. And Playground Specialists have been extraordinary in their support of those activities. So, by way of procurement, as I mentioned, we're going to use, uh, we'd like to use the Houston-Galveston Area Contract. As you know, uh, the use of cooperative purchase agreements is, is encouraged by the state. It's permitted in our board policy and our, and our regulation. HGAC Buy is a national cooperative. We are a member of that cooperative. And as I mentioned before, we have previously used this contract. Playground Specialists, uh, is the representative for, uh, Play World in our area. The contract is written, so we get a mandatory ten percent discount off list price. And then, uh, they're providing us an additional ten percent discount to us. So, by way of financial recap, we currently have a fund balance of just over two hundred and twelve thousand, close to two hundred and thirteen thousand. The proposal that we shared with you is essentially a hundred and five thousand. That leaves us a remaining balance of just over a hundred and seven thousand. In the FY twenty twenty local CIP, we have bundled playyard improvements with the building infrastructure programmatic projects. So, we feel that that combination is going to get us where we, we need to go, uh, to finish up the projects. This is not a great graphic. If you know, Greenview Knowles, the school is back in this area here. The bus loop is on this side. There's a large asphalt play surface here. And then, there are three, uh, separate existing playgrounds. We are going to go ahead and replace the surfaces for all three playgrounds. And then, for the primary, um, that equipment's a little corroded. We're going to go ahead and, and replace that equipment. And then, in terms of equity, um, for the schools, we have been placing swings, uh, in the playyards. So, this is a new, uh, swing facility for the school. So, that is essentially the scope of the work. The, the surface that we're using now is wood carpet, so it doesn't have the environmental restrictions that some of the other materials have. And it's, the price on that has allowed us to do all these schools. So, we will be able to go ahead and work through winter, early spring to, to get this done. Our hope is that with the FY twenty twenty, uh, funding, that we can quickly go ahead and, um, estimate and get proposals for all three schools to make sure that in the next year, we can, we can finish that up. So, that's, um, that's the action item today. We're asking that you approve the agenda item as presented. And with that, I'll take your question.
I'd like to thank you for your presentation. I'd like to say that the fastest way to a child's heart is through a nice playground. Just thank you for this, it's, it's really nice.
Can I ask, but wood carpet, is that just wood shavings, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they're wood shaving, but they're engineered, so they're, they're, they're recognized as an ADA compliant surface.
That was, okay, that leads up to my next question is, um, it will all be ADA compliant, the, all the equipment then? But we have three playgrounds that are, that also need upgrading. Are those, at this time, ADA compliant?
Yeah, most of the equipment there has the ADA activities, the level of activities that, uh, we strive for. So, um, and there's a few in the, in the, uh, in the new playground there that, to add to that.
Okay, so the, basically, it's going to be like, kind of like wood shavings, but it'll be hard enough to bring like a wheelchair or something on?
Yeah, it takes a little while for it to get compacted, probably about a month or so before it gets compacted to where they can use it, but, um, easily. But again, that's become our standard throughout the school system.
And when do you anticipate this being completed?
You know, the, the weather i- is always an issue, but I'd like to, you know, get started by late November, early December. We'll just see how it goes and probably be finished up in February and March.
Okay. All right, thank you.
For, I believe it's Greenview, uh, you have a hundred and five thousand allocated, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Green Holly, Green Holly, I'm sorry. My question is, for all of the schools that you've already completed, uh, how did, how did the cost relate to the, to your proposal, a hundred and five thousand?
They've actually come down.
Have they?
A- as we started with the most efficient schools, we were up in the hundred and eighty, two hundred thousand dollar range. So, this hundred and five is quite a bit less. And as I say, uh, the fall surfaces, which is a big component of the Greenview Knowles, are not likely to have to be done at the other three schools.
I see. So, the scope is different then?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any money allocated for maintenance at all?
The maintenance department is responsible for annual inspections. They have a certified person there, so that's really within their, within their jurisdiction, as it were.
But, uh, the way I, the way you described, uh, the equipment, uh, it, uh, it probably will hold up to normal elements, uh, rain, wind, snow, and stuff like that.
Yeah, it's, uh, I mean, that was really the factor in kind of looking at, at Play World equipment. It's a little heavier gauge metal. It's eas, the panels are easily removed. So, uh, you know, we found it a pretty easy product to, uh, to maintain. And, uh, this group is out of Prince Frederick, not Prince Frederick, Frederick. But they've been very responsive.
Okay, I think, uh, the last question, uh, is the, um, and you've probably answered that actually the, the cost is coming down. The, uh, I was just curious on, uh, I think you said that one of the schools was, uh, last, the equipment was last replaced in two thousand seven, did I hear you?
Yeah, I was referring to Leonard Town Elementary School and Carver, which were kind of constructed and renovated about the same time.
So, the life cycle is somewhere around ten years, ten, twelve years?
It's really higher than that. We've been getting fifteen or twenty years out of this stuff.
So, when they, when they replaced the, um, Playground Equipment Mechanicsville and White Marsh, I mean, that stuff had been in there since like the nineteen, what, the late nineteen seventies?
Why you need to replace it?
I mean, it was like the same stuff that I played on when I was in elementary school, so it might be time for some of that.
That's all I.
So, and I think also, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that when Parks and Rec has been replacing their equipment, that they're using the same Play World equipment as well.
They are, they are, yeah.
So, at least.
Which makes it a lot easier too, to schedule work and, yeah.
Right. So, uh, my only question is, on the bid, we had, we got, uh, we received, excuse me, a sixty-seven hundred dollar discount under the HGAC contract, but then we received an additional one in the same amount for Saint Mary's. Is that just something standard because it was piggybacked on top or that's just what we negotiated?
Yeah, I mean, it, it is a bit of negotiation. We've, uh, again, twelve years plus, so, uh, yeah, we are really probably one of their best clients.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you for your continuous work on getting this done. I remember when we started this, the survey back in two thousand and eight, and we're almost done. Almost ten years later, but we're working to get it done. Thank you for making all the playground safe, the fall surfaces are much better, and that it is accessible to all students. I have a question. And years ago, the playground equipment would get hot, really hot. What temperature will this equipment allow so students won't get kind of burned a bit?
Yeah, well, some of the older equipment was, you know, uh, galvanized metal, tended to be a little bit hotter. But I, I'll say that, uh, during the summer, the, the, the plastic can also get pretty hot. But that's just the nature of the beast.
Thank you.
So, what, what they do at, at Tass Elementary School is, if it's, like, when we had that hut, when it was like ninety degrees, when the teachers go out, they, they don't allow the children to use those pieces of equipment, especially the slides that, you know, are uncovered that would be, that could, you know, potentially burn, or, you know, a child, so.
The majority of my questions have been asked and answered, and I appreciate that. Going back to Mr. Davis's point about the fact that, um, the, the costs to us have come down, is that a question, is that a function of their prices are going down or the scope of our work has changed over time? Because the first, um, the first playgrounds that you addressed were the ones that had the oldest equipment and the greatest need. And so, um, I would think that, knowing that we're adding to or just replacing some portions in these later projects would tend to have brought the cost down by virtue of the scope of work?
That's, that's absolutely correct.
Okay, so it's, it's not, Mr. Davis, it's not a break in price so much as it is, um, the, the scope of work, but also, you have to look at the fact that, um, I think they started doing work for us, um, back in about two thousand six or be, a- actually, had done some work for us even prior to that. Because, uh, the PTA got together and raised funds for, um, Leonard Town Elementary School to, um, put some new pieces in. And that was all Play World equipment. So, um, I really appreciate the consistency across the system, partly because of the maintenance aspect, but also because, um, in going from one school to another, uh, the sense for students and parents to understand that, um, we're not shortchanging one school, um, at, for, um, for the benefit of another. While this project has, um, taken a, a number of years to address all the schools, it is something that we are, are doing on a, um, a very thoughtful basis and, uh, with an eye toward making sure that students have access to the same, same possibilities wherever. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Before we take the vote, Scott, do you have anything?
No. You guys have covered it.
When we were up at Luddy Dent for the Veterans Day Program on Friday, they have the same Play World, so you'll be able to see how the, you can go out there, because you can see how the, when, the chips have, yeah, right, how it's come together.
Okay.
So, because I think we just replaced theirs, what, two or three, two or three years ago, and it was the same company.
Okay.
So.
Somewhat like mulch that just kind of compresses over time.
Right.
So, when you start out, you're kind of digging through it, and when you, over time,
Right.
it compresses, you can walk through it without going through. Oh, okay.
So, we can go see them.
Yeah.
Before we hear all the patriotic songs. Okay, all right. May I have a motion for this recommended action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the use of Houston-Galveston Area Council Contract, PR eleven eighteen with Playground Specialists Incorporated for playground equipment at Greenview Knowles Elementary School in the amount of one hundred and five thousand, eighty-one dollars and fifty-six cents. And further authorizes the use of the contract as funding permits for the remainder of the term of the contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks very much. All right, Dr. Jaffers. Performance matters. See what you have for us today.
I want sixty slides, man, I have a lot to do that.
Were you vetoed?
You got it down to twenty something, so, you know, it was like a.
I dropped it to twenty-four from thirty-six, I think we're, you know.
You know what, we're going to do that big hook on what was it, the?
The Gong Show.
The Gong Show, like if people over here a lot of time in Word docs, we're just.
Talk about a blast from the past.
Okay, so, we're here, um, here's our team, um, Alex Jaffers, this is, uh, Great Edition Jeff Gibson, uh, and Kristen Marr. I guess we own the three-headed, uh, animal, which we call Unify, so. Okay, so, uh, just, this is, um, sort of, uh, we've, um,
taken the old presentation we had, that we did probably about a decade ago, and sort of refreshed some of the screens. We're not going to spend an overt amount of time on any one slide, but we do want to talk about some of the new functionality in particular. So, just, just a refresher, Performance Matters slash Unify, it is a dynamic evaluation tool for all of our, our kiddos here, that blends assessment administration with data analysis, and specifically intervention recordation through a collaborative process using multiple measures. So, that's really the, our, sort of, our definition of what, of what Unify Performance Matters is. And so the history of Unify, the, it was introduced in Saint Mary's County in the year two thousand and five and two thousand and six, which predates a lot of individuals that I'm talking to. But we, most importantly, it provides a lot of standard level lagging and leading data analysis for local, state, and national assessments for specifically disaggregated cohorts. That's, that's the one, sort of, you know, when I go and talk to classroom teachers that may want to push back a little bit on the use or why we have to use this, it's not why we want to, it's allows teachers a more seamless way to sort of unpack or disaggregate the groups, because sometimes it's silent, we don't know, students maybe economically disadvantaged, and this sort of unpacks that for a teacher, and it helps to un-unlock the puzzle, if you will. And specifically, what's happened over the last few years is that Unify has increased its functionality. We have imported a lot of more, what we call technology-enhanced assessment items that mirror what we see on our park assessments. And there's also an increased teacher PLC capacity to self-build student learning assessments, either for one's SLO or student learning objective and/or something that pertains to a standard that would be maybe non-performing. Lastly, we are capable in Unify of housing academic and behavioral intervention data, that's probably what we're going to spend the most time on today. Fast facts here, as of eleven eight, there are four hundred and thirty-seven public tests that are housed in the repository with eighty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-one specific student scores. Over two hundred formative assessments have been created and administered, and that does not include central office assessments. Those are homegrown organic assessments at the PLC teacher level. There's also two hundred and fifty formative assessments at the elementary side. So, we have two hundred at the secondary level, over two hundred and fifty formative assessments at the elementary schoolhouse. And lastly, we have eighty-seven documented interventions that have, that have been uploaded into Unify that include eighteen schools, fifty-three staff members, and three hundred and forty-six students. So, as we move forward here, the three pillars of Unify, you've heard a lot about the data management side, we all spent a lot of time today about that. The second pillar, that's what, I basically own the data management side, Jeff Gibson owns the test construction and administration, and Ms. Kristen Mar owns the response to intervention slash the, what we call multi-tiered system of support, the MTSS for academic and behavioral interventions. So, so working together, we sort of, we can sort of, you know, push and pull and help and support schools when needed. Again, this, this repository system supports, you know, a lot of schools, PLCs, they call this maybe different things. We call this a PDSA, that's what we like to talk about, that's what MSD has endorsed as a Plan Do Study Act instructional model. And really, it's a four-stage improvement process, and it's not just something that we concentrate with instruction, it can also be for attendance mitigation. If we have a problem with attendance, or we have a problem with behavioral, we do have this idea that we can Plan Do Study Act, and it's sort of a cyclical model that we can, it's not a static model, it's something that's dynamic and, and ever-changing based on the data that we get, these data feeds. So every two weeks or three weeks, is an intervention working? Is the instructional tool that I'm using, is it working? And I can use Unify to help unpack the validation of that intervention and/or strategy. Specifically, what, what really has grown over the years, since I've been using Unify, data, Performance Matters as a teacher, and as a supervisor now, in my current position, is that we've actually incorporated a lot more culture and climate data, what we call the ABCs of the student performance, A being attendance, B being behavior, and C being course grades. And we sort of juxtapose the culture and climate side of the data analysis with the student achievement. So we have this culture and climate, this lagging data, that we sort of, we marry up with student achievement, and it helps us really unpack some, some either, you know, why gaps exist or where gaps exist, so that we can mitigate in the future. As I move forward here, for teachers, there are really five reports that we focus on. The first one, this is the landing page, so as a student, I should say, as a teacher, logs into Unify, they get the My Unify Report, which is all the culture and climate data that's married up and can be married up with their academic data. And it's all in one landing page, it's on, it's on their opening site, and, and then teachers can, can sort of click around accordingly, based on the fact for the needs of that particular day.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Please.
So when, when they pull that up, can they do that by, like, let's say I'm a history teacher?
Yes.
Can I do that for all of my students? And then can I also disseminate that by individual class? Like, if I have one class that's struggling, that, with something that another one isn't?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, so if you have a hundred and fifty kids on your roll, then if you have six periods, you can go to third period and see, the one fifty can be melted down to twenty or twenty-five, and it has pop-up rectangles of each kid. And ideally, you want to import their picture there, so it's, it talks with our student information system at the same time. Upload it every night, so yes. The Student Detail is another great report, it's, it's drilled down to the individual student. This is another feature in the, in the increased functionality for Unify that we've seen over the last decade. Students' grades are there, students' grades, meaning from last, the last three years are archived. We have also student scores from national assessments and local assessments from last year and this year. And allows a teacher to have a very contextual idea as to how students perform compared to the classroom, the school, and the county. So it's a, it's a really nice report, and it's, it's very important, because you have a schedule there too, so in high schools, it's unwieldy sometimes. It's not like elementary where you have, and you can look down the hall and yell and scream at a kid that's not in, in your class.
We never yell and scream at a kid, though.
Positively interact in a positive, productive way.
Let me qualify there, sometimes I would do that, maybe not, that's not what we teach, so. But if I'm in high school, and, and there are, you know, a lot of kids at the school, and I don't know where the student is, I can pull the schedule up seamlessly, call the period before, and see where this individual is. So, another really good report is Baseball Card, where we really look at leading and lagging data, that's what Kristen's going to really talk about, how we can take intervention data with attendance data, with performance data, and sort of all throw that, throw it all in one graph and one layout, and really get a feel for the kid in their, in their performance. Student item analysis is very important, working with our DCI supervisors, and we actually work with the association a lot with the student item analysis, we can try to drill this down to a specific standard to help drive the instruction. And I think specifically, when we, when we administer a test, we want to give after-guidance, or after-test guidance, and we go right into the student item analysis report, which helps coach us through some of the next steps after an assessment's been administered. Lastly, is a comparative report, it's another new function, this is where a student can be brought up, or, or a school can be brought up against other schools, and we can look and see if their, their performances can measure it, or is there a, you know, is there, you know, some sort of non-performing either standard that we can sort of unpack. And just, just to be clear, there's, data's never used punitively, it's always used formatively. So if we do see, if there are, you know, weaknesses in the data, let's just say it allows us an opportunity to drill down to that standard and sort of uncover, you know, weakness, and, and get a plan of action, much like the Plan Do Study Act model that we had talked about previously. Coming down the home stretch from, from my part, the last two slides for, for the data management side of the student learning objective, which is the SLO writing process, and again, one specific thing that we do utilize Performance Matters for is this idea of targeting achievement gaps for disaggregated student groups, drilled all the way down to the standard. And we segue that with building sort of a group, you know, maybe it's an SLO that's for attributed students, so we can use, you know, some of the filters that we create, whether it's period two, whether it's economically disadvantaged, we're able to sort of mix and match, our teachers are able to do this, based on the filters that we can create in Performance Matters, so.
Will you just explain briefly the color coding?
Yeah, the color coding, that's, this is done oftentimes, we, we look at, our team works with the supervisors to determine the, these thresholds, thresholds, we have, we have as many as five different thresholds that we can upload into the system, it's based on data. So what I will do is I'll do a simple regression analysis based on performances on national park tests. We get our student data from the past, we see how those same students did on our local assessments that we've created, and we can use that and extrapolate that to our present year. So if a student's getting twenty-four percent, or sixty-five percent, or ninety-five percent on a certain test, we can basically extrapolate that to where they will be at the end of the year, based on previous data, and we use the color, color-coded thresholds to help us determine where those cut scores should be based on past performance.
So the, the green shows that the students have achieved, the yellow means that there's still a bit to go, and the red is concern.
Absolutely, we call, yeah, those are our ability groups, we, and again, you, I think you're absolutely right. Normally, a red, pink is introductory groups, and we want to work on those individuals. Yellow's sort of developing, they're close to getting and acquiring that, that instructional understanding, and green means they are on track for, for, for good things, that portends good things on future assessments.
Thank you.
Alright, so I get to talk, so referring to all that stuff that Dr. Jaffers was talking about in terms of the data, in terms of all those test scores, we have eighty-six thousand roughly this year, as of the eighteenth, I think, of October, I think, no, the first of November around this, when we pulled that, so that's just what we have in so far. The way we get all that in there from the teacher level is we build tests in the platform. Now, test building in Unify has a couple of different methodologies where you can get data in. All of the methodologies allow the data to be standard-aligned, what you're looking at right now is like the highest level of test building, where you're building a fully interactive online item in the platform that would be delivered across the computer. So that's the latest feature in Unify, is the very fully online stuff, that's probably the thing we're still building out the most. We're acquiring item banks of ready-made items in that format for teachers. And last year, I also worked with teachers to construct banks along with them that they could use countywide. Going back kind of to our roots though, to some degree, this is probably most commonly, especially in secondary, what's presently used to get standard-based data that you can disaggregate by economic disadvantage, student with a disability out of a test. So this situation here is you have a paper and pencil test, you don't have access to a computer lab for whatever reason, you don't have access to get every kid into the computer lab to take a test online, if you wanted to build it, you can build this answer key. And this essentially is a Scantron, Scantron's like a specific company, but we all know that word. So this is a Scantron, and it gets, basically, every single question you see here is aligned to a standard or can be aligned to the standard, that's up to the teacher whether or not they do that work. And when we get the data out of it, as Dr. Jaffers was saying, you're able to look at the standard level at that entire test and say, hey, on standard RL dot one dot one, they were doing this well. On dot four, they were kind of struggling a little bit more. And that's where instructionally, I've gone out to schools and done, I think last year, about sixty trainings on this test construction build, and that's where they get a lot of value out of it, because then you can look back and say, hey, this is where my kids are struggling, I don't have to reteach the entire unit, I have to reteach this particular standard, and maybe I don't have to reteach it to everybody, I have to teach it to this subgroup that really did struggle on it. So that's the answer key-only test, and then we have this missing link piece right here. So we have a ton of answer key-only assessments that have been built in the system across the last several years, they continue to be built. And what Unify's done for us is, they've given us the capacity to deliver those tests online now. As we increase our computer capacity in the district, as we increase our ability to get kids into computer labs, and have that network support to have them taking that test, you can essentially take an answer key-only test that you've already built, that you've had for years, you can upload a PDF of the actual test that you would have previously passed out in class, and now the student can actually take the test online. So what will happen is the test will appear as a PDF over to the left, and then the student's just making their answer selection over to the right. And that's all getting scored by that existing answer key-only assessment that that teacher might have had for years, or might have made this year. Just to give you an idea of the lift of building the answer key-only test, I can build like a forty-question test in about ten, twenty minutes maybe, the first time I have to build it, and after it's in there, I can just reuse it year to year. So it's the lightest lift to get stuff, and then this is the little, if you want to get it online, you can get it online as well. So that leads us to online, and this is where, this is probably the heavier lift to have items that are fully interactive that you have in Unify that you could deliver on the computer, it's heavy for a couple of reasons, getting students onto a computer can be a struggle sometimes. But we're trying to support it and make it as easy as possible for teachers. And in that vein, last year, we constructed, I think, what is it, like, four thousand-ish items, somewhere around there? We took Goalbook, the site, and we built in about four thousand Goalbook items that were standard-aligned for teachers to use. So anybody in the county can look into Unify, they can say, hey, I want to build a test, and they can look into that Goalbook bank and make a test out of those existing items. They're already aligned to a standard, the teacher doesn't have to do any work, all they have to do is deliver the test online and score any human scoring pieces, such as writing responses. We also have measured progress banks, those have been in there for a while, but we're trying to increase capacity of people knowing about them and how to use them, because sometimes they sit there because we're not, we were not aware they were there. Jason Hayes and Dr. Jaffers purchased the STEM Gauge Bank this year to assist with MISA, and Jason Hayes has ba- built several assessments for his teachers out of that STEM Gauge Bank, but he's also made those items available for teachers to build their own tests. And we also have park release item banks that we can build tests out of, if you want to kind of use that as a teacher to kind of mark your progress to your kids, give them some experience with that actual authentic online testing piece that they're going to have to be responsible for when it gets to be the spring.
I have a question.
Yes?
Are these, are these grade-specific?
So they're standard-aligned?
Okay, right.
Which means that it's specific to the grade, but as well the banks, so, so clarify.
So if I have someone, let's say, in fourth grade that needs help with a third-grade last standard?
Everybody has access, yeah, everybody has access to everything. So if you're a fifth-grade teacher and you want to give a first-grade standard question for some reason, you have full latitude to do that.
Okay.
But you can also sort it by that standard, which includes the grade level in the standard code.
Okay, alright, so if I needed to, so if I had a standard in fourth grade, and I, and if there were standards in first through third that led up to that standard, I could then drill down and use those questions if I needed to in order to help them get mastery?
Yep, absolutely, yes.
Plus, with Performance Matters, you could also look at each individual student in your class and see how they performed on first through third grades, to determine, were there gaps there that have then led to the gap you're seeing in fourth grade, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Now, when you say everybody, you're talking just the teachers, correct?
Correct.
In terms of security, that's.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, so in terms of security, we have some permission levels in there. The only people that can really see student data are people that directly interact with that student on an academic level. So meeting.
And all the items are secured to the teachers?
Yes, yeah, absolutely, yes.
So what, what you're saying.
So you can't be like Facebook and try to sell us data.
No.
You can make a lot of money.
No.
I can't do that, okay.
So, so what you're saying, let's say, if I develop a test, like you were saying, I had a test set was going on the Scantron, and now I want to put it in here, is that test now accessible to any other teacher in the system?
So that it's permissions-based, you can make it available to other people, or you can choose to keep it private.
Okay.
So you have that latitude, so if you're a teacher that doesn't really want anyone else to use it, because we do have teachers that kind of are concerned that people will misuse an assessment they built for a very particular purpose, and look at that data the wrong way, they can keep it private, or if they want to use it with their PLC, they can make it public and their PLC can use it.
Okay, now, what about sharing the, when you develop a test with other school systems?
So there are options for that, we've opted in some item sharing, but we haven't opted in any test sharing in particular. So some of the items we make become available through what's called open source with Performance Matters, but not any large amount have we done that.
And I just, just to clarify, with all due respect to what Jeff's saying with regards to test creation, it is, it's not as seamless or it's intuitive for teachers as, as it would be for maybe Jeff and I and Kristen up here. So we, we find that that to be the biggest sort of hill to climb. We, we, in no way do we, we want to convey to everybody that it's, it's very simple. It's, 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 it is intuitive, but it can be, that's where the biggest professional development has to come, how we can help teachers build these assessments that are seamlessly created in Unify with these item banks. We, we really don't want teachers to create their own assessments, we want to be able to drill down to an item, then they can sort of craft these assessments with these banks that have already been vetted into an assessment that makes sense for them. So it's, 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 I don't want to give you the impression that it's seamless, there's a little bit of effort that goes into building this.
Absolutely, and when we talk about the seamless piece, that's really the answer key-only test. Absolutely, and when we talk about the seamless piece, that's really the answer key only test that I showed you on that first slide. When we talk about a fully interactive online test, we really are trying to build out those banks for them to use the items out of, rather than expecting them to go in and build their own items. There are some teachers that are ready to tackle that, that are your tech-savvy people that really wanna get in there and build their own stuff. There's been a lot of interest from science because of the nature of MISA testing coming up. But most teachers are really using that answer key only, or they're using the existing item banks to build tests. Uh, and the last thing on this slide is just, there are a lot of item types, I didn't, couldn't fit them on here, I didn't wanna increase our slide number. So if you're interested in the number of interaction types.
Educator, that's why, this is, yeah.
And so if you're interested in the types of interactions, that link will direct you to those types of interactions, so you can look at them.
So the, the third pillar, um, in Unifi here is this ability to now keep track of the data intervention for both academic and behavior interventions, and we began piloting this with the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year. And this year, our goal is to, um, get to every single school this year and do some training to help, um, staff get in there. So the biggest benefit to recording this intervention data in Unifi is that that data stays with the student through their entire time in St. Mary's County Public Schools. So as they change school to school, whether they're moving mid-year from one school to another, or just the transition from elementary to middle to high. Um, the teachers and staff who have the access to view that student in Unifi would be able to see their intervention data. Um, the other benefits really all revolve around the reporting capabilities. There are different reports where staff can view the group progress and the, the success of the intervention, but then also relate that to the progress through, um, county assessments and state assessments, because we don't wanna just see intervention progress, we wanna see progress in all learning, success in all learning. Um, some of the other reports that can be used, we can, um, provide the intervention records for your non-IEP carry- carriers as required by Senate Bill One, we can use some of the reporting to support grants, which we have, have already been in the process of doing that for both, um, support for requesting funds, but then also to provide evidence or usage reports. And then there are a number of individual student reports that can be shared, um, perhaps with parents, with other staff members at a PST meeting. Um, so this is a list of all of our current programs. We had joint meetings with Departments of Special Education and Student Services so that they could decide which of the research-based interventions would be included in Unifi. Um, right now, we have thirty-six, that includes your academic and behavior, as well as elementary and secondary. And this is a list of all of the parameters that, again, um, in meeting with Special Education and Student Services, each program has its own layout of, um, the scoring tools that are used to monitor progress, as well as, um, just other parameters as far as like the meeting times. One program might require thirty minutes three times a week, another program may require forty-five minutes three times a week. Um, your group size, again, one program may say, a, a group can contain up to ten students, another may limit that to only four students at a time. And then the tier is also selected, whether that's tier two or tier three. Once the interventionist spends a few minutes to set up their group, once they select their program, we've already, um, sort of preset the, the parameters for each program. So when they select the program, they will just see the options relevant to that program, they won't have to look at that whole page list. Um, they'll just have the, you know, three, four, or five scoring tool options, that sort of thing. And once they set that group up, then they c- are ready to enter data at any time. The, um, a staff member would select their scoring tool and then enter the result for that s- tool, um, the date that that was administered, they can also then enter any comments that would be relevant to that. And they can also enter just general comments at any time, and the date would also be associated with that, so that when you are looking at the reports later, you can track those, um, comments and results by date. In addition to the progress monitoring of the intervention, you can also track the participation and the attendance. So both the, the minutes attended, so if you have a thirty-minute group every day, you could track if a student was perhaps late, only there for twenty minutes, or if the student was maybe there all thirty minutes, you could track those, they only participated for half of the time. And that's important also because, if, as you're looking at that student progress, if the student appears to maybe not, not progressing through the intervention, that might not be the intervention, it might be that they're actually not attending or participating when they're there, um, for that extra time. So these are two examples of the individual r- reports for an individual student. The first is a graph that is automatically generated in Unifi as data is entered. While in Unifi, that graph is interactive, it's dynamic, you, um, each scoring tool or, um, attendance or, uh, test scores that you enter, everything is labeled with a different color. So you can, but then you can select or deselect the different tools that you wanna look at to change that report some. You can also zoom in and out, this example covers October to June, so that's basically the school year. So you could, could remove a couple of the tools, just look at something, you could zoom in, just sort of look at the dates, um, a little more closely. And then the second report is a PDF that is available to export. And when I go out to schools to train these teachers and staff members, I always hear that they love this report. This is, this is the one they love. Um, at the top of the report is the information with the student name, the staff member's name, those options that were selected at the beginning, whether that was, you know, meeting three times a week for thirty minutes and so on. And then just all of the data that's entered. Any data points, the results from any of those scoring tools that they've entered, any comments, the dates, um, associated with all of those points, as well as the attendance. So this can be printed out to be shared at a meeting or at a parent conference. This is also what is available for, um, for this year's teachers, they could pull up a student they have, and this is what they would see if there was intervention data from a previous year.
Just real quick, if you look at the one on the left, um, as Kristen said, the duration of that intervention was from October to June. Uh, the four color codes, I don't know if everybody can see what's happened at the bottom, but on the Y-axis, that's what we're, you know, we have, we're documenting their, uh, non-compliance, their aggression, dis- disruption and elopement on the Y-axis. So you can see over time, we would say that that intervention, behavioral in nature, has been effective, because you can see that the Y-axis has been mitigated over time. So I just, it, it's, it's a quick and dirty way for, uh, for, um, interventions to see whether or not this intervention's working.
Just that good visual, without looking at all the numbers, you know, just, just to see that graph, sometimes it's helpful.
Ask a quick question, really quick, um, what does elopement mean?
Um, I believe that is when a student leaves.
Runs away.
Um, runs away, I, yeah, um.
Thank you.
So if our younger children have a tendency to run away.
Yeah, so the, these are examples pulled from what a teacher or a counselor has entered, um.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And then these are just some examples from the baseball card report that Dr. Jaffers mentioned earlier. So the first example, this is a group of three students, an intervention group, and four of their lessons that have been recorded. You could also then add in, um, any other filters, if you're just, if you wanted to look at your economically disadvantaged, um, that sort of thing, also then you could add in, uh, report card grades and, um, test scores, whether it's a, a county assessment, an assessment that a teacher has created in Unifi, as well as your state testing, your park scores. And then you can also pull in prior year data. So the baseball card report, we sort of call it a build-your-own-report, because you can put anything in there that you want to.
And I, I think on this one, looking at, um, the, the top piece where you're looking at, um, scores, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then you look at the bottom piece, is, is the third child, um, really has a, um, a much lower score. Uh, i- I, I'm not sure why the first one has just as, has a zero, but the, um, or the second one, but the, but when you look down and marry up the names, it looks like that child also.
So these are two, they're two different ones that I pulled examples. Um, the first one is, um, is looking at results from, that the interventionist entered. That second piece is actually attendance monitoring. So I think it was just when I was looking, it was, I just found somebody who was tracking the attendance.
So, but you.
So it's a separate.
It would potentially give you the opportunity to see if a child's scoring much lower, um, have they been attending consistently?
Exactly, right, so the, um, the two columns there for the attendance in the bottom image is showing the total minutes attended, so this one was out of a hundred and twenty minutes so far, so right, that bottom student, I think that says ninety minutes? Um, and then that second column is the participation percentage. So that bottom student only attended ninety out of a hundred and twenty minutes so far, but also has only participated seventy-five percent of the time. Um, and there's, I didn't, didn't copy the full page report, but all of that is explained in the columns. You know, if you really were looking at the, the true report, but exactly, so you could look and see that, yeah, the scores are going down, but maybe that is because the attendance has also, um, gone down as well. And that's really the RTI piece?
Yes, yeah, so, so the whole idea here, I guess, so what our team does, we do these, these bullets up here, we do the data management and the assessment development, uh, as well as the training, uh, we do the scanning and data uploads on a daily basis. Uh, we collaborate and are collaborative with our planning, our support to PLCs, based on what schools need, PLCs need. It's often differentiated training, uh, the data recordation training is very important, that's what Kristen's talking about, that's the new, uh, reports. Uh, and again, uh, you know, when you talk about the baseball card, you wanna see, as a student, not only mastering the intervention, but are they, are they extrapolating that, that performance into, into our local assessments, into national assessments? Uh, because it doesn't do us any good if we can't extrapolate that good behavior, that good mastering that intervention and some other, um, avenues and venues. So, um, we are also using, uh, uh, the PMPD, uh, that Lisa Bakter and DCI use as a, as a coursework, uh, so that people want a little bit more training in the Unifi platform, we can provide that as well, so. Uh, and Jeff, he's authored the Unifi Support Site, which is fantastic, I think a lot of teachers like that. Uh, it's more of a twenty-four-seven turnkey PD, uh, and if you, if you, you click on that, it should take you to that, you know, uh, that site where you can get any question answered in the Unifi platform. And I know that I funnel some things into Jeff, Kristen funnels things into Jeff, and he, he makes it, uh, live, so. But that's, uh, that's what we are, that's what we do, um, uh, and, uh, we're here to take any questions if you have any.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I was looking at your Unifi Google Support Site. Um, I'd just like to thank you for your presentation, you've been very thorough, I had a lot of questions, but you answered all of them throughout your presentation, so, thank you.
Oh, sure.
Thank you, the same, uh, you answered the questions as we went along, so that was real good.
Uh, I'm very impressed with the, with the data collection.
Okay.
Uh, of course, you didn't have that back in the old days.
Paper and pencil.
Uh, so I can, I can obviously see the, the advantage of the teachers. Uh, you mentioned, uh, earlier, I was concerned about the security, because, uh, there's a lot of sensitive data in there.
Yes.
Um, I'm thinking out of the box, so don't, don't laugh at me, but I was thinking that maybe you could, could, a student that's going to college, and he's got a good record, is there any way that data could be transmitted to the admissions director of a college, does that make any sense to you?
Um, well, just, I sent one of my own kids to college last year, and I, they, um, they ask for SAT and grades. They don't necessarily ask for specific local assessment data or park data.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And colleges don't have, honestly, uh, institutes of higher education, they don't have anywhere near the complexity to even understand this if we sent it to them.
Okay. Well, I'm, that, that.
They don't, I've got, you know, I've got two in college, and, you know, they're, what, what, you guys are scientists, alright? You are psychometric scientists who are truly doing an incredible amount of work, and, um, I, the, uh, ultimately, we, with the Navient system that we have, we do communicate a digital transcript, but that's just course and grade information, and that's kind of light years ahead of, of where we've been.
Of course, I, I, I was, I agree with what, uh, Dr. Smith said. On the other hand, when you're submitting a package to college, they're looking at, whether you're a Boy Scout, how many Eagle badges you got, uh, what, uh, what clubs you belong to.
Yep.
Uh, there's a whole series of, um, data points, if you will, that, uh, they all consider. Um, so that, that's kind of where I came with, um, you're talking basically quantitative data.
Yeah.
Uh, qualitative data is not in this, is that correct?
That's, that's inaccurate, yep.
And of course, um, a lot of teachers just using, and you were, used a word, I think, earlier, intuitive, uh, assessments that teachers have, so between quantitative and the, and the qualitative that they formulate, it appears to me that, that they have a, like, heads on, heads up. Now, can this tool be used, uh, to measure not, not only the student's performance, but the teacher's performance?
Well, we, we don't, um, again, we don't use data punitively, um, I do think it, it, it informs, let's say we, it informs the administrator, um, and also the whole PLC, 'cause sometimes, uh, and Jeff being, he's out of the classroom the most recent one, he's a, he used to be a fifth-grade teacher, sometimes you throw all the data up on the screen, uh, and everybody's basically sitting there naked, you know, figuratively, if you will, and, and all the data from their students is up on, uh, to be sort of unpacked, and I think, once you get that comfort level with, with your team, I think it's extremely powerful. But, but I don't believe that we use this data, um, in a very punitive way to say, if your student is, isn't here or isn't performing, or your class isn't performing, uh, I, I think it just informs, hey, this is where we have some weakness, hey, why don't we, you know, what can we do to help mitigate that weakness, so. Uh, but, but your, your point is extremely well-taken, when you, when you talk about the intuitive side and the qualitative. And, and I think, you know, I don't want anybody to think that Unifi should, should replace a teacher. We're talking about taking quantitative data, making much, much more as, uh, accessible for a teacher to process, and to take that qualitative experience and marry those two together to really get a powerful sense of where a student should be. Uh, and I know personally as a teacher, I knew where every one of my students was at the end of each day. I, I knew, 'cause I could see it on the face, if they have, if they understood, and that sometimes isn't captured in this platform. But I knew with qualitative and quantitative, that's the most powerful sort of, you know, it helped me form decisions uh, much more meaningfully than just one or the other, so.
So, yeah, thank you, thank you, very impressed.
Yeah, thank you very much, you've answered all my questions, but as I asked them through the presentation.
You want more slides? I could, I could work.
You could send the supplemental ones.
Okay.
To me, in a nutshell, this is a highly scientific approach to student, um, teaching and learning for pre-assessment and post-assessment, thank you.
Sure.
Um, I, I mean, you know, I, I love Performance Matters and always have. Um, it's a far cry from the Excel spreadsheet that Mark Murphy put together years ago.
Yeah.
Um, the dashboards, the fact that they're all color-coded, so really you can look at it and in a blink see, um, are my students all where they need to be? And, um, with the professional learning communities, I like the fact that as, as teams bring things up and take a look, um, if there are students who are struggling, um, that they can turn to each other and say, you know, how were you able to communicate this to your students, how can I best reteach, or is there somebody else on that team that might, um, have a better connection and be able to, um, impart that knowledge, so. Uh, and the, and the fact that you really have taken the gap analysis to the next level, as far as I'm concerned, not just understanding where the gaps are, but by adding that, um, culture and climate data on top of it, you can really take a look at, um, is there an underlying root cause?
The getting factor.
That is separate from, um, the instruction that's being provided? And if so, then really have the opportunity to look at the supports in place, um, within the school and within the school system, to determine if there are other things that can be done from a culture and climate perspective, um, to help that student so that they are then receptive to the instruction that's going on. And I think that is just absolutely huge, so, um, kudos to you for really working with Performance Matters and taking this to the next level, because I know that, um, they have a bill as, as you all have participated with them, and they're better for it, so.
But see, and you have your point right there, it's very, it should be taken, it's a very sage point, because that doesn't mean you have to teach math or ELA to be able to access this platform. Sometimes we hear, oh, we teach social studies, or we teach science, or we teach another content. And e- even our friends over at the Tech Center have actually definitely employed this as part of their instructional, uh, day, so that they can use that culture and climate and juxtapose that with what they do in performance, 'cause everybody has to teach something. They have to teach either a standard, they teach a topic, so we can definitely quantify that, so.
Well, and, and the fact that by having all these standards laid out, because that's all been imposed, if you will, on us, the opportunity, um, for that to be, um, put together in a, in a very coherent way so that teachers can understand, these are the standards I have been addressing, um, and then go directly to. So that teachers can understand, these are the standards I have been addressing, um, and then go directly to, how do I best assess that? Uh, rather than just sort of, you know, picking and choosing, well, you know, these are the questions I want to ask. Um, i- in order to get to where they need to be, where their students need to be, I think this is, um, a, a helpful piece. It is not the total, as you point out, um, by any means, but it is a very helpful piece, and I think by having this, um, I, I hope. Our intent has always been that this allowed teachers to work smarter, not harder, um, so that they're making best use of their time by us offering these tools. And all of you, um, adding to them so well, so, thank you very much.
Just, uh, take the time to please, um, go through the site and, and take a look at the fabulous resource that's there, the, the way it's laid out. It's laid out by an educator who understands how to walk youth through, uh, understanding. And Performance Matters, when it first came in, it was a, it was a, based off of an Excel spreadsheet, and it was, it, you know, it's evolution is mind-boggling. And when we get to, you, what, what UniFi really is, um, uh, just the pen, the pinnacle of, of a, of a classroom assessment tool. To really help teachers understand their, their instruction and what the kids are getting and what they're not. And then ultimately with RTI, what they're doing about it and whether or not that's helpful. We always ask, you know, what, what aren't they getting, why aren't they getting, I'm gonna do this, is this gonna help? And all of these questions are answered within the platform, we never, this, the only, from central office, the only thing that we really extract from UniFi and from, is, um, standard. Like, we, we see how standards are performance, we are performing, we take a look at our county level assessments to see how we're performing and, and project based on that. But this really is, this is the, this is the teacher's greatest tool, and it's the teacher's tool. And, and you facilitate them being able to use it quite well, so just thank you very much.
I just had one comment, and, and, uh, it's, it's somewhat related, netizen testing. Uh, I've heard a lot of criticisms that, uh, every time you give a person the test, they're not wearing anything. Now, that may or may not be true, but, um, in some, some instances, if you're testing and twenty percent of the time, they're doing some type of test. They're not essentially learning, so there's a, a balance, if you will. I know it's somewhat ancillary to what you're doing, but, um, maybe with the assessments that they have, you know, these kids are doing well, maybe you don't have to give as many quizzes or.
That's right.
Things like that, so, uh, I'm, I'm very impressed with, uh, the tools that you've set up, very, very impressed.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Great, thank you very much. All right, with that, we will.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Mar.
Mrs. Mar, Mr. Gibson.
Master Plan and ESSA.
Well, hello.
Hello. Good morning.
Hello.
So you just saw the very micro version of what happens in the classroom, looking at both student achievement and culture and climate. And now we're gonna go up to the big bird's eye view for the Master Plan and ESSA update. Um, and so Dr. Montgomery and I are here to talk about, um, where we are, we've, we've just submitted our, our Master Plan, as we do every year. Um, and that'll look at, it, uh, we'll explain a little bit of that, but also we're gonna connect it to the new, um, ESSA accountability measures by the state of Maryland. And how those all tie together. Um, and what we're gonna be presenting really reflects the collective work of, of a lot of people. For, um, all of the supervisors and directors in the Division of Instruction, the collaboration that ensues throughout the year. Um, from, from the curriculum instruction and special education and the Assessments Office, um, and Student Services, all come together for the work that we are presenting. So, um, uh, we'd like to thank all of those individuals who have contributed to this. So as we've presented in the past, the Master Plan is nothing new, for about fifteen years, we have been working off of a Master Plan process. That wa- began with the Bridge to Excellence, uh, in Public Schools Act, that has since been, um, has since evolved. Um, and we have been presenting updates to it, especially as assessment systems have changed. Last year, uh, when we presented the Master Plan, we thought that it was going to be the last time that the format we were using was the format we were using. Uh, House Bill, uh, nine-nine-nine and House, House Bill four-twelve, um, asked that we align the Master Plan with the ESSA reporting. Because the ESSA reporting process was delayed until this year, uh, this year's Master Plan really reflects the same model that was there for the last two years. Which was an update on how we're doing with Park particularly, and how we're, we're working to address achievement gaps. So those were the, that's what you're going to see, and that's what's in the Master Plan that's been presented. So the Master Plan is presented in, in two parts, the first part really looks at, uh, just an executive summary overview of the school system, its focus, what we're, we're looking at. And we talk a lot in the executive summary about those two pieces that Dr. Jaffers shares, uh, shared, and that, um, Dr. Montgomery will share a little bit further. Which is looking at those academic pieces, as well as the culture and climate that really makes up our focus on the whole child. Then we have a review of our finance section and the goals and objectives as they relate to Park. Part two includes all of the federal grant programs, so that would be Title One, Two, Three, Four, um, as well as the Fine Arts Grant, the State Grant, and other reporting requirements. Which includes, uh, a, a report on the victims of violent crimes across schools. Um, so again, the key elements, as I, as I talked about, looking at the focus on systemic initiatives. Uh, the finance section looks at reports for our system financials, where we ended the year, and variances across, uh, those areas. The goals and objectives look specifically at Park, uh, particularly for English Language Arts and Mathematics, and how students are doing in areas of disparity, disparity, as well as what we're doing to address those. What we've done in our Master Plan is looking at for, uh, for ELA and math for grades three through five, for secondary ELA grade ten, and, uh, Algebra One, Park. Uh, the, the Master Plans, the goals and objectives, uh, goals and objectives section looks at all of the data, then breaks down, uh, a review of that data. Looks at specific areas of challenge, and then provides several pages of specific strategies to address those areas of disparity. Um, what's nice with us coming second is you heard a lot of what those interventions and supports look like through, uh, what Dr. Jaffers was sharing, and what has been presented at previous board meetings as well. Um, the assessment report that was there no longer is required in this year's, um, we have this as a slide because it was still written in there as a requirement. Uh, but about a month before the Master Plan was submitted, they said that it's no longer required because of the, the new ESSA reporting that's coming out. And then part two, again, is the federal and state programs. So our timeline has been, um, these are the MSDE timelines, our timeline actually began months before this. And working to look at our, uh, data and, uh, as supervisors, uh, across the divisions worked to look at that data and develop plans, uh, across the system. We've been consistently implementing, um, instructional plans related to, uh, the, the Park, uh, as, since its inception, and then also looking at interventions for students. Uh, that was presented in October, uh, October fifteenth was the first draft of it was due. It was reviewed by a panel of representatives from across the state, system representatives who serve on these panels. Uh, clarifying questions were provided for the school system on October twenty-fourth, we received five total questions. Uh, those are explained and answered in, um, in, as appendix to the, to the part one. Um, then, uh, those responses were turned into MSDE, they approved our, our responses. Um, the final submissions are actually due this week, we turned ours in last week, so that's why we're presenting it to you now. Um, and those final plans are presented to the State Board for official approval on December fourth. The public can find our, a Master Plan online, uh, by just scrolling down on the front page of the website, or clicking the About Us button. And clicking the Bridge to Excellence Master Plan, it provides, uh, not only this year's, but goes back to fifteen years of Master Plans. So with that, um, that is the, the, the Master Plan side of it. Uh, what, uh, what we're also going to share is how that matches up with the, uh, the ESSA and Maryland's Accountability Plan, and from here, I will turn it over to Dr. Montgomery.
Thank you, Dr. Mar. Okay, so, you have seen this graphic before, where we've shown you these percentages, and we've sho- shown you academic inter, uh, academic indicators and school quality success indicators. Because a few years ago, we started to talk about ESSA, and we knew that schools were going to be evaluated based on those two components. So sixty-five percent in every school is going to be getting a report card, and we're gonna talk a little bit about what those report cards are gonna look like. Um, but so, and e- the report cards are going to consist of information where sixty-five percent of it is based on academic indicators and thirty-five percent based on the school quality indicators. Um, and a couple of years ago, when we were presenting this to you, we were talking to you about how we started to align what we were doing with SMCPS. And we started to look at what were the requirements in ESSA, and how were we, how, what was that gonna look like in the schools? So we started to align the School Improvement Plan to that, with, with, from the Master Plan to the School Improvement Plans. And then literally bringing it down to what the teachers were doing at the SLO level, and the principals, and what their SLOs were. And everything was tied to the academic indicators and to the school quality success indicators. So I'm gonna spend a little bit of time talking to you about this slide and all the component pieces, because, um, as, as you can see, there's seven elements. That elementary and middle school, seven indicators that elementary and middle schools are going to be, um, based on, and eight for high school. And so I'll take elementary and middle together, and of course, they're divided by the academic indicator sixty-five percent, and school quality by thirty-five percent. And it shows you what the breakdown is of each one of those, um, indicators. So the very top, elementary and middle, we're looking at, um, uh, at, at English and math proficiency. Okay, so English and math, I'm gonna need to read from there, yeah, that's gonna be better for my old eyes. So English and math proficiency, and that's just simply a straight percentage for, um, for Park, our Park scores for ELA and math, and twenty percent of it is based on those. And then the English and math growth, where we have twenty-five percent, um, they gave us a great example of how to explain this at MSDE. And it's really taking a group of ki- a, a group of kid and how they did perform from one year to the next. So for example, if a student in third grade earned seven-twenty-five on the Park ELA, um, test. And then as a fourth grader, they'll look at that student, and maybe the student at that point earned a seven-thirty-five. So they're looking, is, we really don't know, is that good growth or is that not good growth, if they move from seven-twenty-five to seven-thirty-five? So what they look at are all the third graders that earned a seven-twenty-five, when that's, when that particular student earned a seven-twenty-five. And they take a look at what their growth was as fourth graders. So if their growth was to seven-fifty, then the child that earned a seven-thirty-five, it wasn't such good growth. But if their growth was, say, only to seven-thirty from third to fourth grade, then that child's growth was good. And that's how we're, uh, going to be assigned those points, and it's a complicated formula. Um, then we have the well-rounded curriculum and the transition, uh, the well-rounded curriculum and transition to high school. So they're gonna be looking at fifth grade and elementary school, and they're looking at credits earned in Social Studies, Science, Fine Arts, PE, and Health. And, um, MISA is going to be a part of that, and then for eighth grade, they're looking at credits earned for ELA, Math, Science, and Social Studies. So then we keep going down, ELL progress, uh, ten percent of the report card is gonna be based on that. For students that have, um, the, the number of students that would make up that subgroup in their schools. So for us, in our elementary schools, we have three elementary schools that are going to have their ELL progress, um, assessed on, on the report card. And that's going to be George Washington Carver, Lexington Park, and Park Hall, and only one of our middle schools, and that's Spring Ridge. And all the rest, they're not going to have enough in that group to make up that. And then when I get to high school, Great Mills is also included in that. So then moving down to the thirty-five percent, the school quality success indicators, all three of them have the attendance component. And it used to be that we would look at, you know, ninety-four percent or above, in the state, as, with the aggregate, how many kids were coming to school? If your attendance was above ninety-four percent, you were good, but now we're looking at chronic offenders. So students that are missing ten percent or more of the school day will be considered chronic offenders in, um, in this reporting system. And then the third. Uh, I'm sorry. That's okay. So chronic offenders, um, we have students who.
Chronically absent.
Chronically absent, yes, 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 yes. So chronically absent, um, we have students who, um, have significant health issues, uh, who wind up in the hospital for a period of time. Um, are, and, and they receive home health teaching, correct? Yes. Um, will that be counted for them in terms of participation, attendance? Or is that a separate item? So if a student is lawfully absent or unlawfully absent, they're still absent from school, but if we're providing them those services, then they're still, they're not, they're not part of our lawfully absent list.
That absence is recorded as, uh, as home hospital instruction or hospitalized instruction, so it doesn't count as an absence. But anything else, for any rea- so if you're, so if a child gets the flu, or breaks an arm, or goes out, regardless of it being lawful or unlawful, it's, it's chronically absent. So the, this new state standard is for every two weeks, if your child is absent one day out of every two weeks, that child is chronically absent. And the school system will be then, uh, penalized for that, the school individually will be penalized for it.
I have a question on that, so me being on the Board of Education, I'm currently missing school for this, and it's every other week, would that mean that I am chronically absent?
You're, that's co- I believe that's being coded as a school activity.
Okay, so school activities are different.
So that's, so that's fine, so if you go on a field trip, that's a school activity.
Okay.
It's only when you're absent, absent, yes, for sports, it's a school activity.
I'll let you know if we see your name on the list, like.
Okay, then next we have ten percent, which is the survey, um, so MSDE released the survey in October. And, um, then there were problems with it, and then it was, so we, back and forth, and it's for students and for staff to take the survey. And, and we're gonna talk, we're gonna talk about each of these components in detail to you over in the next couple of board meetings, but we're just kinda giving you an overview of it. But, um, the survey was, it's not gonna count this year, they've had a lot of problems with it, and then we'll see what happens, if it's gonna count next year. Uh, actually, we're re-administering the survey in February, so we'll see what happens with that. And then we have ten percent that is dedicated to opportunities and access. So in elementary and middle school, we're talking about, uh, opportunities and access to science and social studies, ELA, ma- uh, uh, science and social studies, fine arts, um, PE and health. And then in middle school, it's PE, health, fine arts, and also something called computational thinking. And we got a list of courses that will, um, that will meet that need in middle schools. Right now, we have, uh, courses that will fit that, that, that requirement, that expectation in two of our middle schools for the eighteen, nineteen school year. Um, I'm sorry, for the, yeah, no, for the nineteen, twenty school year, but none at this point have met that computational thinking requirement. We're still going back and looking at what, you know, what we have in our curriculum, cause we did just get that list. Then in high school, same thing if you come there, elementary, uh, English and math proficiency, same with their Park scores, you'll have the, the math score for algebra, and then the, I mean, the math score. And then you'll have ELA ten scores, graduation rate, it's going to be based on ten percent of it, will be based on the four-year cohort data. And, and five percent will be based on the five-year cohort data. And then on-track ninth grade, so we're looking at the percent of students that tran- that, um, earn four or more credits as ninth graders in core content areas. So in reading, in, uh, ELA, math, science, social studies, or world languages, and they have to earn four credits for us to get points for that. And then completion of a well-rounded curriculum, that is our, um, CCR information. So we've presented to you about CCR and tests that you would take for CCR, and then again, ELL progress, the only one of our high schools that is going to be measured with ELLs is Great Mills. And then attendance is the same, survey is the same, and opportunity and access, it's just that they have, um, opportunities to be involved with, um, with rigorous programs. And all of that has been, uh, outlined in our program of studies. So, so this is, again, a report card, they're going to be earning points for each one of those areas. And the points are going to then, uh, they're gonna have the denominator and the number of points that they earned out of that denominator. So the, for the example that we have is if they're earning.
Sixty-five, that's.
Yeah, forty-six out of sixty-five points, and then they'll get a percent there, and the same thing for the school quality and points earned for their school quality success indicator. Um, uh, and, and I, we talked about all the component pieces that'll go into earning those points. And then, so just like, um, what we, I talked about, that only five schools had the ELL numbers, so the maximum, the denominators, cause we don't have the survey, and not all the schools have the ELL. The maximum denominator for our elementary schools is seventy-five, middle seventy-three, high school is eighty. And they will get a percentage based on that, and then they will be awarding stars based on the total earned percent of where, where they fall. And their percentile rank will compare them to other Maryland schools that are the same level for elementary, for middle, and for high school. So this is what the, uh, the stars will look like, as you can see, the percent of points, seventy-five to a hundred percent is going to give you a. As you can see, the percent of points, seventy-five to a hundred percent is going to give you a five-star rating. And eighty-one, um, I'm sorry, sixty to seventy-five will give you a four-star, forty-five to sixty will give you a three-star, thirty to forty-five-two. And zero to thirty is going to give you a one-star rating. So all of this information is, um, you know, not entire, some of this information is new to us. We knew that the ESA reporting system was gonna come out, we knew we were gonna be looking at these things. So we have been doing a lot of things already, um, with respect to, you know, how, what, what's actually happening in the schools. And we do, we have formative and flexible assessments, and that's kinda going, going with what Dr. Jaffers talked about. We are looking at our formative assessments, because our formative assessments and our students performing well and formative assessments that are aligned to a park is gonna help us on our students to do well in park. So we have already been doing those things. You know about the standards-based initiative, and, and our standards-based report cards going out today for the first time. So we have aligned everything with standards-based instruction. All of that, again, is going to lead to, hope we don't lead to, um, better performance on park. We have the social emotional pieces, we've talked to you before about conscious discipline and the responsive classroom, restorative practices, capturing kids' hearts. All of those things are happening for the social emotional learning and the multi-tiered systems of support, the tier one, tier two, tier three interventions, PBIS. All of our schools are involved in, uh, working through those things.
So, uh, our next steps, as, um, again, it's fortuitous that Dr. Jaffers and his team presented first, because you talked, he talked a lot of, they talked a lot about the data monitoring that goes on related to the assessments and the interventions. Um, as we move through, uh, as the new accountability system, uh, rolls out this year, we will be getting process, new processes for our master plan for next year. Uh, my guess is, is that we will be building a master plan from scratch based on the accountability indicators, um, that, uh, Dr. Montgomery just presented. Those report cards are, are to be presented to the State Board of Education in their December meeting. And from there, being released, um, publicly across the state. Uh, that data will also be posted on MD Report Card, uh, this December. Um, and if you're used to using MD Report Card as a way to drill down, you will still be able to drill down by school. The report cards will present those accountability measures, uh, that were just shared. Um, MD Report Card will allow a little bit greater drill down to look at, uh, specific demographic groups as it, as it currently allows. All of this is couched under, uh, a, a bigger process, that is, the Kerwin Commission's recommendation. So while we have this in place, uh, we're waiting to see how the Kerwin Commission will present its recommendations, what will be, um, enacted, uh, and funded, and that may change some of these elements as well. So with that, um, we're open for questions and comments.
Okay. I don't think I have any questions for you, because from what I've grasped so far from your presentation, this isn't like a, a report card that you would send home to, like, parents and children? Or is it something that could actually go onto Hack?
Go ahead.
It, it, it won't be something that will put on Hack, but parents will have access to the data. And they'll be able to see the data and the, the rating system for their school.
Okay.
Or, or any school that they wanted to look at.
Thank you.
Okay, I have some questions in general, then, some more specific. So if, this is last year of Park, okay? How will, how will that change, like, really, oh, how we are aggregating and, and comparing all this information? Um, you know, because we have this, you know, like, ten percent, you have all the different standards of how it's all broken out. And now, this is last year for Park. So how will that change things?
So Park is going to be replaced with MCAP. And so all of these, uh, that will be the state reporting system then that we will use.
Assessment program.
Yep, exactly, the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program, yep.
And they are, they are currently putting out for bid the building of whatever the assessments that they will be building. And all the assessments, in theory, are to crosswalk back to Park assessment, so that they would be able to do that longitudinal look. I, honestly, we don't, we don't know. Forty-five percent of this is based on Park scores, and really, it's based on just the last two years of Park scores. And Park changed for the, o- over the last two years, it's, it's, it's changed. It, it, the, the test continues to evolve, so I, and the data is gathered from seven different points, from two different buckets, that'll be condensed down to like four larger categories that will then result in a mathematical computation of a numerator over a denominator that may be different for different schools. And then that will be translated into a star system. Our schools, I, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have a lot of three-star schools, I think. I think we're gonna be right in the middle. Um, the, the, the middle school's requirement for computational learning, that eighth gr-, all eighth graders have to have a transcribed course for computational learning, that means that none of our middle schools got ten, got those ten points. Because we don't have a system-wide designated eighth-grade computational learning course. We will be in good company. I was speaking with all the other superintendents yesterday. And they also did not, do not have necessarily a designated eighth-grade computational learning course. MSD just sent us the list of those computational courses that they would accept. We got that list to our LAC, our Local Accountability Coordinator, last week. Which would be a little after the fact, since they were pulling this data from last year, so.
So ju- just to put on context before we drill Dr. Montgomery, Dr. Maro on all of this. So this whole, and by the way, great job on the, on the master plan, right? I mean, that, that-
Oh, yes, that's right.
I mean, that, that, I mean, the thing is a beast, you've done a fabulous job, right? But all this ESA stuff is all coming from MSD. And from what I feel, and I have gone to different workshops on it, is that it was created with blinders on, without any input from anyone else in the state, right? There's a group of people sitting somewhere on the floor in Baltimore City that put all this stuff together. And then funneled it all out to the school systems. And now, we've given them all this data, and now they're like, oh, my gosh, you don't have this, what do you mean? Right? I mean, both of my kids tried to take the survey, and it didn't work for either one of them. So, you know, and, and they've had, what, eighteen months that they knew it was coming? So before we all-
I can send out a Google survey right down with it.
Right, before, right, so before we all jump on, and not, I'm saying that anyone is, but it's, it's not, it's not, we're just reacting to what we've been given. And so, old s-, old thing in accounting, Tammy, you know, garbage in, garbage out. And I'm not, you know, so what they've given us to, to, to base ourselves on, I don't think is, is accurate.
Okay.
Because I don't think that there was that, that interaction between any of the school systems and, and, uh, and MSD in order to craft this.
But that's always been the way it's been.
Right, right. So now, we're gonna be left to explain why we have, you know, three scars, star schools, right? And maybe we really don't, but maybe the data that they used to, to craft it wasn't most accurate.
Just as an example, so for high schools, your high school, Leonardtown High School, um, graduation counts fifteen percent of that calculation. And I will put to you that there's no other measure that matters at high school
Right.
other than graduation rate. Graduation rate is the only thing that matters to every child attending a high school. And to every parent, uh, you know, who has a child attending high school, what matters is that they graduate. Um, and so it is fifteen percent of this calculation.
I think at the end of the day, um, each parent knowing, is my child getting a quality education? And what evidence do I have of that fact? And when I go into the school, what does the school feel like? Uh, you know, i- is it a happy place? Do teacher, are teachers smiling? Are teachers interacting with me? Um, or are they, are they all heads down, close the door, leave me alone? Um, so I think each one of us goes into a place and understands, um, our children and how they are doing in a particular place. And this is an exercise for all of this in trying to quantify that. Um, and, and that's more art than science, I think, in a lot of cases.
So, did you take the survey?
I don't think I did. To be honest with you, I don't think I did.
That day, right?
We, we did even, with, with the advisory group that we met with last week, the, one of the things we were talking about, and ended up speaking on it for quite a while, was the survey and the frustrations of staff. And then also reflecting the frustrations of students as they were taking the survey. And if you're trying to take a survey about how somebody feels about something, having the survey not work may, may influence their results.
Well, the one, the one for fifth grade that Taff took, he said it was forty questions. And then he got like halfway through it, and then everything shut down, and he couldn't go any farther.
And the teachers were ninety.
So, you know, I mean, it's just, you know, it, it just wasn't well, well out, so. All right, I'm not, I do not wanna quash anyone's questions about anything in the presentation, but just to formulate all that.
Okay, well, thank you for that answer.
It's not their fault.
Yes, okay, I was just wondering what we were doing, if, if we're all basing it off of Park. Now we're, like, doing away with that, okay? Um, and then my other general question is, um, I know that, um, when you have either English as a second language or, um, someone with a disability, that you do have, which I think is fantastic, if you have an issue or a problem, that you have a proposed solution, and that is all in here, and I think that's fantastic. My question becomes then, because it says on each one of these that I looked through, that there's very little evidence-based, um, information going forward on the different areas. So whether it's math or English or writing, you know, it says, uh, the number of strong research-based mathematics interventions are limited. So therefore, I know that the teachers or the team that has come up with solutions, possible solutions, are you then keeping record, does this work? And then would this become evidence-based to be provided out to not only for our school system, but for maybe other school systems? That this does work in, you know, for these situations?
Right, so the, um, it, what you're talking about is in the, part of the, in the master plan, part of what they have to do is identify a challenge for why there's, um, gaps in, in, in the data between one student group and another student group. And, you remember too, that it's dealing with a data that's a, a year past. And so what you see is that was a challenge in terms of if those evidence-based practices are not implemented with fidelity. So then you see in the strategies piece, uh, a real emphasis on professional development. It also captures the, the new rollout of new curriculum materials that, that, that we've implemented this year too. So, um, while it may have been a challenge in previous data, it's been identified, and a solution is presented both in terms of what our focus is instructionally this year, and the strategies that you see in the next section. So, um, also, uh, to, to answer your second part of the question, Ms. Weaver, is the, are we tracking data? And I think that what we just saw previously is very, very detailed data about how they're doing. And not just how they're doing academically, but if they are receiving an intervention, to what extent is that being implemented with fidelity? And then, um, to what extent is it having an effect on that student, both, um, behaviorally or, and academically?
So then, does that become, uh, available for other instructors or teachers in the system to say, okay, well, now I can go back to that and say, yes, that did work, so therefore now that becomes evidence-based, and I can go ahead and use that? Does, does that make sense, that you're now, uh, going back on something that you, has been proven to work? Or maybe say, no, it hasn't, so we need to change this?
Yes, I think that that's part of that professional development piece that goes on, is, is the results that we're seeing and how that's then being rolled out across the schools.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, sort of a, a add-on to, to, uh, uh, the earlier comment about the Park testing. Uh, do you have any, any reading at all on the Kerwin Commission, on what they're gonna recommend? And is it, is it gonna have a major impact on redesigning your, your plans?
I haven't seen specifics about how it impacts a, a statewide assessment, if that's what you're asking.
I don't think that's a fo-, been necessarily a focus of the Kerwin Commission. They're looking more at early childhood education, um, how teachers are trained, how teachers are paid, um, uh, career and technology education, um, some other aspects. If you go onto the MAE website, there's a really good tutorial on there about the specifics of Kerwin as it stands.
There is one of the building blocks that talks about a comprehensive instructional program that's aligned K to twelve. And I think that may be a piece that's already in place, um, so it may not require as much focus as some of those other areas.
Of course, I was just reacting to your-
Yeah.
-to your presentation about effects of the Kerwin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all that.
I, I've said my piece, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you for this, um, presentation. It's a lot of information, and you compacted it very well. And I like the links that you gave, that we can go get additional information. Thank you very much.
Well done on the master plan. Um, just as you talked about the fact that, uh, that last year was supposed to be the last year of the master plan, and we were supposed to be on to two-point-oh, um, I fear that, uh, with Park, um, we're gonna be still talking about Park two-point-oh next year rather than, um, whatever MCAP is going to be, given that they haven't even let the contract yet, and therefore, um, don't know what that's going to look like, hasn't been tested, and on and on. Um, I guess when I look at some of this, especially when you talked about the, the growth that is going to have to be calculated, um, MSD already is challenged to turn around test data in the first place. Um, I'm not sure that them, then also being able to measure growth student by student across the state of Maryland is going to, um, improve their timeliness. And therefore, I'm not sure how much help it is to look at a report card six or seven or eight months into the school year that really has to do with the previous school year and, and what overwhelming value that will be for us. Um, that has long been an issue for MSD, uh, and they've long known that school systems and board members across the state have, um, have, uh, had issues with that. I'm not sure how that's going to go. Um, but, you know, we'll see. I think, at the end of the day, um, what I look at is our students, um, I look at what's going on in schools when I walk through, when I have the opportunity to experience classes. And, um, and, uh, a lot of times when our students come back here and present to us, you know, thinking of those STEM students who came to us, uh, at the end of last year, um, the, the depth of their knowledge and the incredible experiences they've been able to have and, and move on to tell me that, um, students are getting a quality education. And at the end of the day, no matter what the report card shows, while it will be a factor in, um, me looking at all of our schools, uh, it will only be a piece of the puzzle. Um, so for me, that's the most important, is, uh, there's, there's that artificial piece. I wanna look at the reality of what's going on in schools. Um, and, you know, parents coming to, to, to talk to me, um, at various times, to either telling me they have an issue or they don't have an issue, and they love what's going on. Whatever it is, this community is great in the size of it, the, the connectedness of it, and the willingness of people to share, um, both positive and negative, so that we can address whatever needs to be addressed.
The last I'll say about the, so yesterday at two PM, we got from Maryland, it got sent to the superintendent. It's the Maryland State Report Card Communications Toolkit, so we have it. We'll be unpacking it with staff today. Um, the timeline for them to roll this all out is over the next several weeks. Um, I, I can't, I can't str-, and, and, and as Education Support Professional Day and Educators Week, I think we, I think you've definitely seen the incredible level of what goes into teaching kids. And what goes into a standards-based instruction and assessment model in a classroom, and the incredible work that our teachers do to find out what, what, what works and what doesn't, and then how to go about fixing what doesn't work. Um, to take all of that work that goes on in the classroom with our incredible staff, with our kids, and reduce it down to a, a star rating, um, is exactly what MSD is doing. So in December, all of the complexity, the nuance, the incredible performances that we have with our kids, the exceptional learning, the, the thing that really makes us special, the art of teaching, will be reduced down to a number of stars on the M, on the MD Report Card. And you will, it'll be a Yelp, you'll be a Yelp rating.
Yep.
And, you know, your school will be this star, and then you'll get to be like, well, I have more stars than ours, and, um, that's, that really is where we'll be. Uh, I do think there's gonna be really good data on the MD Report Card site. And when you drill into it, you'll be able to really see what's working and what's not. And when you drill into it, you'll be able to really see what's working and what's not. I hope that it then is reflected in the master plans that we write moving forward, so we can really talk about. Because we do believe that sixty-five percent is academics and thirty-five percent is all of those culture, climate, social. We, we, we believe that. Um, we just hope that people take the time to click down through. And so they don't just say, this is the star rating, and then start, go out school shopping. Um, uh, you know, I, that's, that was the conversation that we were having yesterday with the, with all the superintendents. And I don't know, this is, this will be released in less than a week, I don't know how many stars you have. I don't know how many stars Ridge Elementary School has, or, or Spring Ridge Middle School has, I don't know. And we, we, we haven't been given a chance to really go through our data to see what it means. But it'll be put out there, it's as though we just did report cards, all right? And it used to be, way back in the day, I as a teacher would have my grade book and nobody would see it. And I would write down, and at the end of the marking period, I would give you a B. I would never give you a B, I'd give you an A, of course. But I, but it would be, and you'd be like, I can't believe that Smith gave me a B. Because you wouldn't know why, you wouldn't know how you earned that. And that's what we see in college, for the record, there are those people who are paying a great deal of money in college. Nobody knows what their, nobody knows what their grades are until they're posted and they're like, oh, I guess that's my grade. We don't do that. We walk you through the whole time, we are upfront with our kids, we're upfront with our parents, that's why we have Home Access Center. You don't need a report card to know what your grade is, right?
It's so helpful, compared to where I used to come from, where I had to wait to see what my grades were, to be able to just go in and every day see what I got on a test or um, on a quiz.
And where I need to put my work.
It's so timely that I can, if I, if I miss something, I can go in the next day and be like, hey, I need to make this up, my grade does not look the best.
Right.
Yeah, um, it's, it's really helpful, so.
And, and so that's what, we, we don't, we haven't, we'll, we'll find out what our, we'll find out what our grades are in December. And um, you know, as a former C student in high school sometimes, I will love, I will love those in the middle. I will help those beneath, we will laud those above. Um, but we all, uh, you know, we all, we all are really happy being here, and we've got a great school system, we've got great teachers.
I think when, when you look around the state, and even when people from MSD come down here, um, and show them the Tech Center and you show them the Fairlead Academies, and you show them the, the Charter School and you show them the programs at, at Spring Ridge and Great Mills and at Chopticon and at Lenartown. Um, they're like incredulous that we have these things. So it kind of makes me wonder as if, you know, I, I don't know how involved they are within the, within the, the LEAs locally to not understand all of the programs that we are offering, and not just us. I, you know, that's the feedback that I receive from other people on different boards throughout the state, so, um.
We brought Brett Kerwin down here. Dr. Kerwin visited us and we showed him the Tech Center and he was astonished that.
Right.
Public education could look, we, we brought Mark Tucker, the, the, the person behind a great deal of the, the cons- the, the, I'm not gonna do air quotes. The consultant that, who's driving a lot of the work of the Kerwin Commission down here. And they said, wow, this is really fantastic, this is what every, this is what education should look like.
Right.
So.
So it's, it's just, it's a, there's, there's some disconnect somewhere between, and I'm, I'm sure there will be, between the star ratings and what we really have. So I guess my word of advice is, just don't get discouraged. Everyone's just been working so hard.
Click through, look at the, look at the data.
They need to come out of the puzzle palace a little more often to see reality, so.
I do. Okay, all right, thank you.
Those were two really well-timed back-to-back presentations, that's awesome. Thank you very much, Dr. Jaffers. Thank you very much, Ms. Marr. And then we're gonna finish with what ultimately the only thing that truly matters at the end of the day.
The money.
Money.
Pays for it all.
Drives the train.
It's, it's the coal.
So before you are the um, financial report for the month of October. Of the two-hundred-and-fourteen-point-four-million-dollar budget, we have received revenues totaling eighty-seven-point-six-million dollars representing forty-point-eight-nine percent received, so we are on target. And then on the expenditure side. We have encumbrances outstanding of one-hundred-and-forty-seven-point-six-million dollars. Expenses and encumbrances total one-hundred-ninety-five-point-two-million dollars, representing ninety-one percent of our budget. We have no areas of concern. Are there any questions?
No.
No.
I would think, Jim?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
All right, does anyone have anything else?
No ma'am.
Okay, all right, the next meeting will be on November twenty-eighth, twenty-eighteen, at six PM. And everyone enjoy your holiday next week. Out.
Enjoy Wednesday before Thanksgiving break.